Please, let's take our seats. Welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're gonna have our invocation by Dr. Lawanda Filomi of Great Bethlehem Church out of Atlanta, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
That was last meeting, Mr. Chair, not this meeting.
That's what I had.
Okay.
Is this not correct?
It's okay.
We have a moment of silence. Everybody pray.
All right, Dr. Filomi is not here, so yes, we will have a moment of silence. If you would, please pray with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 16th regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, there needs to be an amendment, I was told, made to item number 11 from the sheriff. Chief Murkison, if you could come and state what that amendment is.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. I placed in front of you a revised cost-out assessment. The initial cost-out that was provided and placed on the agenda reflects the addition of the 2025 deputies. But that number that's reflected only covers the personnel, so what you have before you is an additional $46,960 per deputy. It's broken down on the left side of the document. You have $43,000 for the Dodge Charger uniforms and Taser allowance. Adding that will bring the total for consideration this evening to $2,757,527. And that will once again be inclusive of the deputies and the necessary equipment to equip them and get them on the road.
Okay, is there a motion to add the amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Davis. I guess last week we talked to 50, but I'm seeing 25. Can we?
No, I think his 50 was 25 now and 25 for next year.
That's correct, sir.
So will the other 25 be in the budget which is occurring in the next couple of months to begin?
That was the request.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Any others? All right, well, I'm gonna ask to take this item separately, item number 11 that we just amended, put it on the regular agenda. And if there are no others, I will ask for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
Not on the items, Mr. Chair, but I have a one that I think that I would like for you to address because we've all gotten emails on it, and I don't see anything in the agenda to address the concerns that have come up regarding the changes of the regarding the animal shelter. And there are several concerns that I think that definitely need to be addressed. And it was brought up during the work session in time enough that we would at least see some type of resolve on the agenda, but it was not added. So I just would like to know, as a policymaker and a board member, what are your plans as the operations manager of the county to resolve this said issue?
Well, the plans are to address it in the budget, and the chief and I and staff have spoken about it. And it's still a little fluid because there's some discussion that has been happening and ongoing with some of the rescuers that were taken into consideration as well. So you can get additional information at a later time.
Thank you for the budget piece of it, but I think that there's also some questions regarding policies. And as we know, we're not over operations, you are, and so I just wanted to know, have you addressed those set policies? Because I know particularly even some members have contacted me within the community where they were being told that they can no longer come and pick up those animals. So the board is aware, what are you doing from a policy perspective lens as the operations manager?
And as I stated, it's an ongoing conversation with the police chief, so we will give you, the board, further details as we further along the discussion, as operational.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, one more question. So that means that those dogs that are on this kill list, then there's nothing that we can do about it?
I would say that, and again, that's a conversation that we've been having.
So you all don't have a plan at the moment to address it until the budget time?
Okay, address it as you wish, but we're gonna move on. Again, I stated that it's a policy issue with the police department that we have been working through, and we will address it accordingly. Now.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Anderson.
Maybe we need to add it as a work session agenda item so we can discuss it as a board and then come up with a plan on where we need to go from there.
I agree.
Duly noted. Any other comments? All right, hearing those.
No, one more thing, timeframe, sir, because this is urgent. What is the timeframe that you feel we would be able to get this resolved?
The timeframe would be the next work session that we have.
And what date is that, Madam Clerk?
I'm putting it up, y'all.
That is June 13th.
June 13th.
At 5:30.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is a presentation, tax assessors' process and procedures for the 2023 tax assessments. This is presented by our chief praiser, Emmett George.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, other Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioners. I apologize, it's been a little bit of a long day today. I had to take my father for eye surgery, so started real early. So I apologize for that. Wanted to kind of go over a quick little presentation I've put together because I know there's a lot of questions and a lot of concerns that are out there. And after that, open myself up for the questions. So we did send out our notices on April 28th. The deadline actually this year will be June 12th. That is a Monday, Monday, June 12th. And just like last year, home prices have still been shooting up. This is not something that's groundbreaking news, but since January 21 till the end of last year, the median home price has shot up over 60% in the county. It's just a lot of supply and demand. We do take into account some of these outliers where investors are buying them on top of already a purchase that's overinflating and we're actually have not included them as far as our sales ratio studies. Just because a home that sells for 260 that an individual sold to somebody, but then all of a sudden turns around and an investor or one of these hedge funds sells it for three buys it for 315, but everyone else is selling them around 260, that's not representative of that market. That's penalizing everybody else in that neighborhood. So we've taken that into account as part of this dive this year. So a little bit about, we value the properties every year as of January 1. So this particular tax year that notices have gone out for 2023, we're using the 2022 sales. A little bit about homes that are selling for, overall, the simplest answer, and I apologize again here. I'm letting everybody know on this that we do not establish the market. The market establishes the market. When individuals buy and sell their homes, this is a free and democratic society, they're gonna try to get as much as they can, and rightfully so. That's the goal in real estate is buy it low, sell it high, but always try to sell it high. So when we look closely, as I stated earlier, we've looked at these investor sales that were well above what individual sales were going for. We excluded them from the sales ratio study. We had a number of them, and at first, when we started the year, we were approximately, when I started looking at sales of closure of 2022, from where our 2022 tax assessments went out, we were 30% low. That's where we started. When we then went in and started getting rid of some of those outlier sales that just are not part of market, it actually probably took us down about 9% lower, so it really fixed things. Once the staff was then able to go in and start looking at more and more of these sales, and the issue that our department runs a lot of times is, we don't know about renovations until it's sold. We're not getting sometimes, especially from cities, all the permit information. We're getting this information as the sale has happened. And sometimes I'm getting that sale three to five months after it truly sold. We're that far, and we're not getting information. We put this information out there that we needed, permits and different things like that, we're not getting it sometimes. I just met with Forest Park yesterday. They're back on board with us, getting everything rolling. But we're finding out this information afterwards. So we're not, as the sale happens, we're having to then make a point to go out, look at it, figure out what's going on, and that takes a lot of the staff's time. But when we get around to it, we actually were able to get of that 30% that we were behind, probably 11% down from just reviewing sales, kicking out the sales that were not of market. And most of those were investor-to-investor, 30, 40% higher than the typical market sales that were going on. We did adjust our market adjustment 19% this year, which is about what we did last year. So the 11% that we roughly kicked out from getting the renovated sales, getting those values up to where they need to be based on what the information was of the house. Sometimes we have to make age depreciations, or sometimes we make effective age changes to make them newer homes because they've been renovated. Sometimes we have to change quality grades, things like that. So we have got all that done, and then we go apply our market adjustments to our neighborhoods. Each year, as I said, we look at all the neighborhood sales. We go through the Department of Revenue's sales ratio method. We stay within the standards. They require 36 to 44 on the sales ratio, and I'm gonna go into a little bit of a sales ratio in just a minute. The staff does review all the sales. They make all the adjustments, i.e. renovations. Also, sometimes you have where homes are in need of repairs that we didn't have. I see sales sometimes that happen. I'll look at them in MLS, and they are a shell of a house, and we didn't have that information. We make that adjustment accordingly also. After all the sales have been reviewed, then we start looking at our overall, each neighborhood's ratio. And that's where we start making our adjustments on our neighborhood market adjustments. There are 748 residential neighborhoods. Now, this does include that some of what I call a neighborhood is our scattered property. Each of our seven residential areas of the county do have three to five, what I call scattered property neighborhoods, where easiest one to describe is always take the lower part of the panhandle. A lot of those properties that are not in your typical subdivision, we group them together as a neighborhood and keep those looking at sales. And we divide those up into very similar areas. It's not like one quadrant in one way over here. We actually made sure, and we took time about seven years ago, to really group our scattered property homes so that they were all right there together with each other. We did shoot for a goal this year of a 38 and a half sales ratio. I wanted to keep that to hopefully avoid what we had to go through last year with the Department of Audits and going through and appealing that again. So I thought that if we got it around that 38 and a half, that's still roughly about 7 to 8% of the taxpayers fare from what full market or 40% would be. But we decided to keep it at that. We've been running around that 38, 39 since COVID just because the market's been so fluid. We just never know. We've always tried to err on the little bit side of caution. I did mention that we had a 19% overall increase in our market adjustments. But that being said, we also had about 30 neighborhoods that actually decreased this year. Last year, we only had about 12, so we actually had more decreases this year. Little bit about a sales ratio study from what Department of Revenue. So our goal this year was a 38.5. The threshold so that we can bill out public utilities at full 40% value is to keep it above a 37.99, so we need a 38 or better. So as we tried to keep above that 38, we went to a 38 and a half, knowing that we'd probably come down a little bit, and we were at a 38.3 this year. But by staying above that 38, this past year, when we appealed the Department of Rev, I mean, I'm sorry, the Department of Audits study of us, we actually gained another $2,124,026 by doing that appeal because we knew we were above 38, even though they had us at 37 and some change. And that appeal alone netted this county another, just over $2 million in taxes collected from the public utilities. The 38.3 does represent that we're really roughly about 8% below where market sales truly say we should be. And that's just also in keeping with trying to always stay on top, you know, the markets are leveling out in some areas. I know some areas not right around here are seeing some decreases, and I wanted to also not have to have a spike down. I wanted to be able to be conservative enough that we're there. We are looking at what the markets are. We've got, as far as covered, the 38.5 for the reasons of Department of Revenue and Department of Audits. But at the same time, you know, in case we do see some changes and all that, we're already given 8%. Right now, I've only seen two neighborhoods that's dropped more than 1%. We're still seeing about 10% increase on the first part of 2023 compared to where I'm at at 2022. So we're still continuing to climb. I'm sorry, I hit it one more time. Closing, I wanted to kind of go back again and talk about that. The values are as of January 1 every year. That means we use the prior year's sales for taxation, and it is a taxation appraisal. It's not actually a fair market appraisal. If you will look through most online sources or different things that people have already brought into my office this year, we are below most market that I see. There are some out there that need to be adjusted, and as I always tell everybody, if you disagree with the value, the value of your home, that's where my office can actually help. If you do not agree with the value, I know it does equate to a number that is a tax number. But what the assessors are, are appraisers, and the appraisers can work with the value. So if there's something that is you disagree with, then please, definitely come in. You should come in, the office. We've got an ability to appeal online. Just go straight to our website. It's right there, the top thing to click. We've got forms in the office. We got a staff that is awesome in making sure that we're getting back with everybody as quick as we can. The numbers are coming in. But I'll say this, as of yesterday, a very large portion, I didn't say all, I didn't say most, but a very large portion of the people who have come in have left, not disagreeing with my value. They actually, when we start talking to them, they're like, yeah, that's right. I don't like this. And they're pointing down to their tax bill. And I'm like, okay, I get it. I understand it. You know, the values do eventually generate times the mileage and everything else like that, a tax bill. But where I've asked them is, if you disagree with my value, please, come talk to us. Tell me where we're wrong. Let us show you what we have. We're an open book. My appraisers, my appraisal staff will send out the sales to anybody who asks them. That's what they do. They do it every day, hundreds and hundreds of times right now. So that was my closing kind of comment on that. It's just if you disagree with your value of your home, that's where we come in. And I'll now open myself up to questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. George, for your presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. George?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambricht.
What's the status on the, I guess, the operation or whatever of the Department of Audit and Revenue as far as Clayton County is concerned?
As far as, I'm sorry, you said the status of.
Right. Wasn't there an open, I don't want to say investigation, but a checking as to where we are as far as the ratio went off?
We had our ratio study just done in 2022, and we were fine with that. They originally did a 37.73, if I remember correctly, but I appealed that and got it to the 38.03. We actually thought it should have been a 38.13, but we were above the 38. We are in compliance.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, ma'am. The last time Department of Revenue does their three-year annual, which is, was in 2021, and we were completely in standards with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank.
Thank you for bringing this forth. I did ask for this to be on the agenda.
And thank you for that.
Yes, because we get a lot of calls on the value, and I don't go out to, we don't go out to value the homes. But I do have a couple of questions.
Please.
I'm gonna start at the beginning. I didn't want to interrupt you. But when you began with the notices were mailed out, you said June 12th is the final date. But on your presentation, or in when you were speaking, you didn't tell us what is that final date, final date for?
Appealing, I'm sorry, and I apologize.
That's why I wanted to get that on record.
Yes, the final date to appeal the original notices is June 12th. We do have a few properties that we found some corrections that needed to be made, and they are getting separate notices, and they will have their due 45 days by law. But the mass that went out on April 28th, the last day to file that appeal, is Monday, June 12th. The portal will be open till 11:59.
Okay.
The office closes at 5, but the portal is there till 11:59.
And if they can't get on through the portal?
Please reach out to our office. We've got the forms. There's a form that you can get from our form section, fill out, mail it in, fax it in. You can write a note. I tell everybody all the time, because there's a lot of people that aren't computer savvy. We make it very simple. If you will just write a simple note saying, I wish to file an appeal on my property. Make sure we have the parcel, the address, a signature, a point of contact as far as a number that we can reach out. Mail that in. As long as it is U.S. postmarked by the 12th, we can accept it.
Awesome. And what number should they dial?
To call the office, it's 770-477-3285. Sometimes because of the amount of calls, there is a call tree. For residential properties, you want to ask for, get the residential section. There is some confusion that we do have a personal property division which handles like business assets and things like that. But a lot of people think their house is, of course, their personal property. They will transfer you back over to residential. Of course, we have a commercial division. So whatever questions you need, we'll make sure you get to that staff member.
Awesome.
Plus, I have an awesome staff of assistants that also work hard on answering a lot of those questions, too.
They really do. Thank you. And I've heard nothing but great things. Could you go back to this portion here about the increase, the 60% increase?
Yes, ma'am.
What was the increase in the prior year from 2020 to 2021? Because I think that was the biggest sticker shop. Because we understand that, and I'm glad you went over it again, that you all are the tax assessors, and you're hired by, you are hired by the tax assessor board. And while we're there, how many people on your board right now?
We have three, three boards, a three-member board.
Three-member board for 300,000 county.
Our parcel count or population?
Just population, I was thinking of.
But we get three board members.
Okay, three board members. And what's the parcel count?
We have 89,000, I think it was 604.
And who's on the board?
Chairman Lawson, Ted Lawson. Then we have Benjamin Pascal.
Is that DA, the old DA's husband?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and who else?
You have Benjamin Pascal and Suzanne Henry.
Okay, we have one woman on the board. Okay, good.
Yes.
All right, so let me just tell you, we're gonna get back to this. What I have been studying and brought to this board in conversation last year and the year before, when I'm studying to see how other counties are operating, there are counties with much less parcels than us, and they've got at least the number of people that are equal to the number of commissioners on the board. So when we're talking about doing these evaluations, then, and those are the board members that are approving and working with you and hiring you to do this job, I think that's something that this board, hopefully, we can bring back in and we look at. I brought it up a few times, but I do know we need to look at that. The other thing is, when you said that we increased over 60%, and review those factors real quick for me, because I want to make sure that I don't miss any of those.
Sure, and part of my, what I got originally, and I think before budget last year, I brought together part of that presentation, and I denoted that actually back about May to June of last year. Ms. Dees originally actually made a real estate presentation to the board also. And so I was looking back through and trying to make sure that, because she was going from the real estate side and I'm from a taxation side, that I saw roughly the same numbers, and that was where I was kind of also, I pulled, and I definitely in agreement with hers, is that the 160 was the median home price. That's what the average home was selling for at the beginning of January 2021. It went up, 2021 to the end of 21, I believe was somewhere around 230,000, if I remember roughly right. And then we've seen the additional go up in, since '22.
So again, what was the increase from 2020 to 2021?
I would have to look that back up. I was really looking at the last two years that we've seen the biggest jump.
Okay.
This last year and this year, we both saw market adjustments. I think it was 17 last year, and it was 19 this year. And so that was why I've used those two years, so that was the biggest.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could forward that to us, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am, I should.
Another thing I want, I think that we need to definitely keep in mind is that this board, for the past, I think it was like three or four years, we knew there was an issue of the investors coming in and buying up neighborhoods. And one of them I brought even to the awareness of both the entire board, the chair, and community development as well as Mr. Reed. And but it wasn't until other counties were able to put a resolution or ordinance in place that then I was, we were finally able to get that passed here. So I want us to keep in mind that it's very important that as you did this adjustment this year, which is really a sticker shock for our community, I would hope that the tax assessor board would have exhausted all means and measures so that this county, who was the last to come out of the economic slump with the housing, would not have to absorb such a high increase in value all at once. And this board, we have to understand that we also, too, can impact that. We can't continue to lag behind, but we also have to make sure that we are ahead in dealing with these issues that are raising this value in a false way, particularly when we're talking about these investors.
Oh, I agree. That's why we purposely, purposely looked for, especially what I call double sales, sales that happened twice in this year where John Doe sold to Jane Smith, and then Jane Smith sold to XYZ Company. And XYZ Company paid 20, 30, whatever percent more. If it was out of what the regular taxpayers were doing among themselves, then we use that as an outlier because it was gonna penalize. You're probably talking about another 6% roughly on top of that, and that's why we did not, we wanted to do our due diligence on all these. We really, we knew where the values were going because this is just where it's been as far as people buying and selling homes. You know, I tell everybody all the time, I can't go out there and tell everybody to stop selling for their most money. I would not be a good neighbor, and neither would anybody else. I get it, but also get the other end of it. I mean, that's why we looked at the sales like we did. We knew it was shooting up high again. We respected that. We understand it. We knew, you know, we knew we were gonna get a lot of people coming in this year. That's why we made sure we're not gonna try to penalize due to investor sales. We also were gonna make sure that this $160,000 home that just sold for 285, why did that happen? Oh, okay, we didn't know anything about this renovation. We went in there, we adjusted that effective age. We adjusted that equality in some cases, depending on what they did, to bring that value up so that it is closer in a sales ratio study to what it would not penalize the house that was still down there. So, you know, if we'd have not looked at that, you're talking about sales all over the board. Or what they call COD, or coefficient of dispersion, would have been astronomical. And we were, as long as we're below 15, we're inside of guidelines, and we were almost at a nine.
Okay.
So we really looked at tightening those up to make sure that what we had out there was as best as possible.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yes, just, Commissioner Davis.
Yes, sir.
As far as your investor identified sales, do you have a percentage of total sales that that accounted for?
I can work on that for you. I would, but I would say, out of the, we have probably about 80. I would say, out of the, we have probably about eighty-five to ninety-five hundred sales and transfers every year. Uh, we had probably about forty-five hundred roughly originally qualified sales. I know we knocked some of that down, so I can probably kind of get you that it might have been maybe three to five hundred. Uh, that's just a guess, but I'll get you some numbers.
And can you just, at a very high level, give us, let folks know what is needed and necessary in the appeal process?
It's very simple, very simple. Uh, the form, which is either available online, in the office or whatever, you just need to come in. There's a name section that gives name, address, phone number, so we've got contact information. Uh, parcel ID number, which is on your assessment notice, but if you don't have it, our staff will get it for you. Um, there are a couple of things to check, what you disagree on. There's six options. Uh, of course, most people right now is value. Uh, but you have also, if you were denied an exemption, you have that right to appeal. Uh, there's six different things on there. You have four categories of type of appeal. Uh, you have a BOE, which is what, ninety to ninety-five percent, especially most residential, or which means that if you don't get any kind of resolution from our office, you have the right to go to the Board of Equalization, uh, have them hear it, make a decision, and you still have the right to go further to Superior Court. Um, you do have arbitration, which usually kind of gets into, uh, some requirements for appraisals, and so it's got some fees associated with it. You've got it straight to Superior Court, which got, has some different fees and associated with that. And, um, you have a hearing officer, which is mostly commercial, just because it has to be of a certain value, um, on there. And so most people will need to check BOE, uh, not arbitration, because we're trying not to have you have to go pay for an appraisal and just deal with our staff first. Now, if you want to, that's, I'll mean your thing, but, uh, three hundred, four hundred dollars to sometimes save a dollar, it's not wise business.
So if they were to go through arbitration, they'd have to go get?
They would have to provide an appraisal. We would send them documentation of what's required. They would have thirty days to provide one.
Thank you.
Yes.
That BOE, just explain what it is.
Board of Equalization is a member, a panel of citizens. Uh, they are voted on, or, um, appointed through Clerk of Superior Court. They, uh, the same qualifications that it would take for you to serve on a grand jury is their qualifications. They have three members who listen to both sides, ask questions, and then from there render a decision. That decision, you have, uh, thirty days to appeal further to Superior Court or settle, uh, accept their decision. But, you know, usually we go through a couple of steps with our office, making sure they understand everything before we get to that point. But sometimes some do go straight to board.
Any other questions? Thank you again, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a suck? Sucking the motion, are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing, uh, those favor eye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
Our next item is item number eleven, Sheriff's Office Additional Deputy Two. This is presented by Human Resources Director Pamela Ambles.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair Franklin, Board of Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. On behalf of the Office of the Sheriff, Human Resources is requesting the addition of twenty-five sheriff deputy two positions to assist with our constitutional duties. My Human Resources Manager, Ms. Carol Lowe and I, we met with Sheriff Allen, and he clearly articulated his need for these, uh, positions. This, um, the approval of his request will allow us to put two or three deputies in each courtroom as well as, uh, assigning additional deputies to our civil unit. The cost, the personnel cost is one point five million, but of course the deputy will need the equipment and everything in order to get the job done. So when you add that cost to the compensation cost, we come up with a cost of two million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And I think, uh, Sheriff Allen is here. Sheriff, did I misspeak? Are we on the same page?
Okay.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a suck?
I second it.
Any questions? Yes. Commissioner Davis?
These officers I'm hearing are for the courts. Or are they for the jail? Our jail is in dire need of being, the safety being upgraded. I will just begin to address that.
And I can, I'll ask the sheriff if he has any additional feedback on, um, on your question, Commissioner. But I know one of the things that stood out for me as a citizen is the safety in the courtroom. And we have one particular, uh, deputy assigned right now, but there's a dynamics of a lot of different things that are going on in the court, in the courtroom. And, uh, that is one of the main reasons Human Resources definitely understood the request for this need. But in, in, in addressing the other needs, uh, I don't know if Sheriff Allen has anything he would like to add or not.
Yes, I'll call Sheriff Allen up to the podium, please.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Davis, thank you for asking that question. Um, this particular request is for deputy sheriffs, but you're absolutely right. The jail, um, is in need for upgrades. And I'm pleased to announce to you tonight, I have a hundred and twenty allotted spots for the jail. And as of tonight, I have, they're completely full, and I actually have thirty waiting in the pipeline. So I'm glad you're supportive of, of me fixing the jail, because the next request that I'm gonna have come up will be for additional correction officers, which I have thirty that I cannot hire right now, because I do not have the positions. But to answer your original question in reference to where these deputies would go, I would like to upgrade the security of the courthouse with my, uh, judges. There are actually twenty-one, um, courtrooms in the, in the jail, I mean, in the courthouse. And what I would like to do is put two to three deputies in each courtroom. And let me tell you why. When an incident occurs in a courtroom, a deputy has, uh, three priorities. The first priority is the judge, to get the judge off the bench and safe. The second priority will be the inmate, get them out of the area and back into the room secure. And then the third will be the citizens that are inside the courtroom. So as it is right now, we have one deputy to take care of all three. So part of the twenty-five deputies will go to the courtrooms. The second part is, of course, during the pandemic, quite naturally, things went up, as in evictions, uh, you know, divorces, uh, civil papers. So I would like to also take part of the twenty-five deputies I'm asking for tonight to place into those positions as well. Um, right now, a judge signs about fifty dispossession per day, but we're only able to serve about fifty per week. So. No, no, evictions. Okay, I'm sorry. So, just to give you an example, if you've been waiting two years, some I've seen four years for an eviction, if the judge signed the paperwork right now, tonight, and gave it to me, I couldn't get it served until October. So part of those twenty-five deputies, I will have it and I will put them out on the road, so we can get those evictions served. But I'm also, please announce to you tonight, that we have sixty-two allotted deputy two positions, and they all are filled as of tonight.
Oh, wow.
So you've given me the additional twenty-five. I have thirty-three people, some are here tonight, that I can't hire, applications that already approved. If you all give me the positions, I can hire them and get them, get them hired in by the twenty-ninth.
How many approved applications again?
There's thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
But I only have sixty-two positions, which I tell you that all are filled.
You said completed applications.
Yes, so that means they have went through our background process at the sheriff's office to where if I had the position, I could hire them.
So they've already went through the agility backgrounds, even though you didn't have positions available?
Yes, sir.
How many courtrooms did you say you had again?
Twenty-one, sir.
Are they all in service at the same time?
No, it varies. It varies throughout the schedule of the, of the judge.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Uh, how many would you say any given day are in use?
That is a question for my court commander.
Is it your understanding that if you get these twenty-five approved, because I know we spoke in our budget discussion, that when the budget comes back around, you would expect additional personnel?
Yes. Yes, because you, you asked me, is that my understanding?
Yes. So is that in your, in my understanding, is that your intent to ask for another twenty-five in the budget to round off your fifty? You want twenty-five tonight?
Correct.
You're asking for another twenty-five in the budget?
Correct.
That's fifty, so it'll be to the tune of another two point seven million?
Yes, sir.
For a total of about five point four.
Yes, that, that is the total, and that is the request. And again, this will only fill, again, if you approve, if you approve the twenty-five tonight, that mean I'll be able to, that mean I'll, I'll still have eight people that I can't hire, and that'll put me at full capacity. But of course, with the growing, uh, inmate population, with the growing population of the county, we always gotta move forward. We're, we're, we're in a position that not many counties or municipalities or agencies can say that they're completely full. That's just on the deputy sheriff's side. I have three hundred and ninety-six, uh, positions total. So I have about twenty-two vacancies in the sheriff's office as a total, as a total. And by the twenty-ninth of this month, I expect all of my positions to be fully staffed, and that's on the correctional officer's side, that's on the deputies, that's with clerks. We will be a fully staffed agency. And again, when we're in a time where more, most people or agency are asking for more money, as in salary raises, I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking for more people to get the work done and to make Clayton safe.
So the urgency of not waiting for a, a month and a half, because through the budgetary process, which we have spoke on.
Yes.
Uh, we would approve your budget, June, sometime in June, I believe, to be effective in July one.
Yes.
And you are, what's, what's the urgency? Uh, well, I'm not downgrading the fact that public safety is first and foremost, okay? So don't misunderstand that.
No, 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 no.
But when, in terms of the money that needs to be allocated in the upcoming budget, where we are already millions of dollars over budget that we have to balance the budget on, uh, I'm trying to get understanding why it's can't wait until July one.
Outstanding question, and it's, it's easy answer. Um, we have, again, thirty-three deputy sheriffs who's ready to come here now. And if a Fulton or DeKalb or another agency reach out to them, they'll go to them. I never forget when I first started in law enforcement, I was sitting at Fulton County Sheriff's Office, and I was waiting to, to get hired at Fulton County. And I was going through the process. As I was sitting there, my phone rang. I picked up the phone, and I said, "Hello, how may I help you?" They said, "Hey, this is DeKalb County Sheriff's Office, and we, you applied for us six months ago. Wanted to know, do you want the job? You can start Monday." I said, "I got the job Monday." They said, "Yeah." I walked out of the office, at Fulton County Sheriff's Office, and I started at DeKalb. So that's what I don't want to happen here. That's what I don't want to happen here. We have these thirty people. Now, if I could, if I could ask all these thirty people back here, "Hey, will y'all wait another two months before I can hire you and don't go nowhere else?" If they ask you, if they agree, hey, let's do it. But I'm gonna tell you, most of them want to feed their families. So that's the only reason.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank.
Uh, thank you, Sheriff Allen, and, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
As well, um, you all's job is not easy at all. Um, and, but I want to ask a question mainly, not so much for you, but maybe the CFO can answer, because, uh, Mr. Chairman alluded to it, which was really good. But at the same token, I want to know, well, first from you, how much have we increased in the number of people that have been in that jail since COVID and have remained there?
So I have done something that, um, that the previous administration has not done, and that is release some of our violent, I'm, I'm sorry, release some of our non-violent offenders.
Might want to say that again, because you know. Trust me, they will, they will misquote you.
Some of our non-violent offenders due to, um, we just do not have, um, the, the, the capacity to, to separate certain individuals. And it's easier if I can, um, and, and, and just the other day, uh, I had to have a conversation with, uh, the Jonesboro Chief of Police just because of that. They arrested someone on a traffic, on a traffic citation, and of course I had to release that person on a traffic citation, just because we don't have the capacity to, to hold him versus the overcrowded. But he has it increased tremendously, and that's with me releasing people. So if, if I stopped releasing people, then of course we'll be overcrowded.
And then also with that, um, maybe you can answer this one, um, Madam CFO. Uh, our courts, because people have to realize that your job is directly related to the courts, how fast they move or how fast they do not move. And, uh, it is my understanding that we just recently increased, um, the personnel not too long ago for our DA and the Solicitor General, because they needed more people to help process that. Do you remember how long ago we did that? Those folks that are in the jail?
Um, I don't. I'll have to get that information for you.
But when we increased their personnel because of what the sheriff is explaining to us, that we increased the personnel for the sheriff's office at that time? We did not increase it. But then also, the governor increased the number of judges as well for us over the past couple of years. Because I believe, uh, Judge Keisha Wright, he'll even brought that before us as well. Is that correct?
I believe Superior Court did allow for magistrate to, um, hire a few more judges to address the backlog.
That was part-time, I believe.
Part-time, yes.
Rather, part-time or full-time, they were increased, so that means that the load, they're coming in to deal with the increased load. But once again, we never did anything for the sheriff's office at that time.
My knowledge.
Okay, and it's very important for the board to remember, I brought it up a couple of times, that, um, it was brought to my attention, unfortunately, when Ms. Christine passed away, who was one of our public defenders, that for months, I believe, the state had been trying to get ahold of us at the county, uh, office of operations. And it's interesting, because it happened where we were, um, I think we were at ACCG, and one of my fellow chairs, uh, his wife worked for them at the time, has set up a meeting. And I don't know if you know this, Mr. Sheriff, but they came in with the state and told us that we had a number of people in that jail that had not been processed, that we weren't even knowing about. And we never got reimbursed for that. We never increased your load, your personnel, nor did anything else. So I believe that what we're dealing with is a, uh, a term of several years of increased load. The other thing I want to make sure, um, that I ask on the evictions, um, eviction notices. So you said the eviction notices are fifty that are signed a day, and how many with the personnel you have now are you able to do?
So the number's approximately from the judges.
Okay.
We're fifty a day, and we're able to do about fifty per week.
Wow. So we're behind?
Yes.
Got it. And though you, we collect fees for that, do we not? Does the court system collect fees? They collect court fees and fines and so forth? So the county is bringing in the fees and the fines for this increase of evictions, the increase of bringing people into the jail, but we're still behind. It seems like the last bit of our personnel to bring us at least to what we're dealing with. Do y'all say that that's the case?
Yes, I would.
Okay, good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we understood that over the course of a timeline. I, I actually moved to make a motion to amend.
Not to that point yet.
You're not to that point?
Are there any questions, any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to know one.
Commissioner Davis?
As far as our warrants go, how far behind are we on those as well?
So our warrants, we're at about ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-two warrants. Yes, sir.
And you serve about, and you serve about how many of those per week? Well, I guess it's when you can find them, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of hard to say.
And you said something earlier about the needs in, in the jail itself. And I think that's, that's the argument for more correctional officers than deputy twos.
Yes.
But can't you cross-train those?
Allow them to answer.
Yes, so if I, if I heard the question correctly, you're, you're said that more correctional officers should be.
Capacity in the jail.
Correct. More correctional officers should be requested versus the deputy twos. Is that the question?
Yes, the address to the jail needs.
Yes, so another outstanding question. A correction officer can, can only be used in one. a correctional officer can, can only be used in one capacity, and that's the corrections, that's in the jail. If I, if I had the choice of which one, I need both now. But if I had the choice of which one I would choose first, I would choose a deputy sheriff first. And that's because the deputy sheriff has a dual purpose. I can use them in the jail for eight hours, and after that, I can use them on the road for eight hours. I can put them in courts. A deputy can do both, whereas a correctional officer can only do one.
And that's what we do with our fire department, correct? We do some cross-training with EMS, Fire G.
Are there any other questions? All right, is there a motion?
I would like to amend the motion. You already took the motion in a second, Mr. Chair, and then we went into questions.
Then we go on to, uh, the vote?
Well, sir, I, okay, we could vote, but I would like to amend the motion to the thirty-three that he needs.
The thirty-three?
Yes, thirty-three, that is ready to go.
Who made the motion?
Uh, Vice Chair Franklin made the motion.
I made the motion, that's why I asked, I would like to amend.
So go ahead, so go ahead and make your amendment.
I would like to amend the motion, uh, for thirty-three personnel to go ahead and get them in to the county system so that we do not lose them, so that we can be able to continue to operate the court safely, which is our constitutional responsibility, as well as to be able to go ahead and get the, uh, courts, or court orders, uh, processed, as well as to make sure that, um, that at this time, our citizens are, uh, you have everything that you need to make our citizens safe so that we can finally get caught up with the changes this board has made, uh, with your personnel. And that's my amended motion.
Sarah Suckett.
I second the motion.
Any other questions on the amendment? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, nay. It's three-two at passes. And, and Sheriff, let me say.
Yes, sir.
My objection was due to the number and the fact that we're gonna address this in the budget, so, uh, carry on.
So, I have one thing, real quick. It's very important that, uh, we understand our, our responsibilities as a board member. You have been gracious to stand here and answer that question. But as everyone understands, and I like the way Ms. Ambles put it, and I understand that you talked to Chairman or talked to whoever before. It is very important that this board as a whole receives your entire request, and you were gracious to be able to answer the questions, which is great. But according to the state and the state law, it simply states that we are to approve your budget by a percentage amount either up or down. We're not able to go in and assess your contracts, we're not able to go in and to line item what you do. You are an officer of the state, just our other officers of the state. So I understand that some people may have backgrounds in law enforcement, but our roles up here as, uh, as the fiduciary, uh, holders of our county funds is to be able to ask the questions, but yet instead approve it up or down by a percentage, just so that we can be prepared as we go into the budget cycle, so that everybody is on the right page, so that we can ensure that the judges are safe, and we're doing our mandated first responsibility as a board commissioner. So thank you so very much, Mr. Sheriff.
Yeah, and thank you. And again, as fiduciary agents of this county, we got to make sure that we are responsible. We can't write you a blank check, but we do got to make sure that you have what you need to be effective in this county. So thank you.
Yes, sir, Chairman. Thank you, and board members, thank you as well.
Thank you, thank you for the great job you're doing.
Sheriff, you presented yourself well in letting us know what you need. And we've got to sit down and begin to figure out how to give you what you need to be successful. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Godspeed. Chairman, if the board pleases, I just want to make sure that HR understands we are adding thirty-three deputy sheriff to.
That was the amended?
That's correct.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next few items are board appointments, starting with item number seventeen.
All right, first board appointments to the library board. Dr. Danya Sartor was elected as the new mayor of the City of Jonesboro and had to resign from the library board. New term will begin immediately and will expire February first, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Davis.
Move that we hold that appointment until the first meeting in June.
Madam Clerk, you clear?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
Next board appointment is Development Authority. Regina, Regina Deloche. Term on the Development Authority expires on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. New term is four years, beginning immediately, expiring on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seven.
Yes, I have a recommendation. I would like to recommend Ms. Janice Scott to that position.
Is there a second?
I have, I second it, sir.
I have a question. Can we check that to make sure whose appointment that was? For some reason, I did think that was supposed to be, uh, an appointment under myself.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, uh, point information. So the item number eighteen, that is actually an error. It should say Commissioner Davis's appointment, not full board at large. That is reflective, um, in the board listings that you received, um, in your agenda packets on Friday.
So you're saying that it was a?
It was a clerk error, yes. And it should say Commissioner Davis's appointment and not full board at large, and that's reflective of the board listing that the board receives, um, internally that was included in the agenda packets on Friday.
So, Mr. Reed, do we need to rescind the motion?
Was there a motion in a second?
There was a motion, a second.
Yes.
I rescind the motion.
All right, so, second. I'll second it. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now we're rescinding the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Those in favor, aye, or they say aye. Those opposed, all right.
I'm gonna move that we hold that as well until the first meeting in June as well.
All right, next board appointment is also to Development Authority. Fang Dong has missed more than two, uh, consecutive meetings with the Development Authority and has been asked to be replaced. New term begins immediately and expires on March first, twenty twenty-five. This is a chairman's appointment I'd like to recommend to the board, Dr. Tim Hines. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next items are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profan, or direct, I'm sorry, derogatory language will not be permitted. Our first item is item number twenty, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. This is a text amendment.
Uh, good evening, um, Chairman, my, the Vice Chair, and Board. Um, ordinance twenty twenty-three fourteen is an ordinance to amend Clayton County zoning ordinance specifically to amend the zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article One, Section one point five, defined words in Article Three, Section three point one nine MXI, mixed-use commercial-industrial district intent, permitted uses and conditional uses, Section three point two one GB, general business district intent, permitted uses and conditional uses, Section three point three five MX, mixed-use district, and Section three point three six land use matrix to regulate the zoning use classification, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, to provide for appeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for separability, and for other purposes. The purpose of this, uh, text amendment is to, or at least the applicant's request, was to remove the words located on arterials from the name of the zoning use classification for hotels and motels.
This needs public hearing as well, right?
Yes.
So, um, good evening. Um, the, so within unincorporated Clayton County, we currently have thirty-three hotels and motels. Eighteen are on roads that are classified as local roads. Two are on collective roads, and thirteen are on arterial roads. Twenty-three of the hotel motels are within point four miles of an I-35 or I-675 interchange. The map on that we have on here is showing the intersection of I-675 and Highway one thirty-eight, where on the right-hand side is Davidson Park Ray North and Davidson Park Ray South. So we currently have existing hotels, motels that are on Davidson Park Ray Diceline. To the east, there are four disno hotels, motels. All of these are on local roads. The, um, the property owner of the Rudd Star, um, that is on the map, they would like to open a hotel. Um, however, they cannot do that until the code is changed. This is the, um, list of the arterials and, and collectors in the county. What we, what the staff is re- is requesting is that hotels and motels are permitted on arterial roads only. Sorry, the current requirement is that hotels, motels are permitted on arterial roads only in the GB MX and MXI zoning districts. Our proposal is all hotels, motels permitted on arterial roads. All hotels and motels on non-arterial roads with a conditional u- use permit. In the Diceline, we are requesting, and that is the each individual zoning district section of the ordinance. And we are also requesting that we amend the land use matrix, uh, Section three dot thirty-six to reflect the proposed requirements. And so that, that's, um, that's our, our, um, presentation.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. So if anybody would like to speak in favor of Mr. Patel, who is the applicant, of his request, please come forward. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? What district is this in?
It's an amendment.
This would apply to all, all of the districts. Um, if, if, if this is approved.
Though, I'm speaking about where he wants to build a hotel.
Uh, the, it is in District One. Davidson Park Ray.
Did he mention what type of hotel?
The brand name, no, sir. Um, we,
Commissioner, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair. This, um, amendment, although it came, uh, via an applicant who wants to amend the, the code to build a hotel. In our research, you saw the data that we looked, we actually went and searched the county to, um, get an, a better understanding of what we're dealing with after it was tabled the last hearing. With what we are trying to do, even if this applicant doesn't show up, we want to go ahead and approve this, because it makes a whole lot of sense, given that where some of our hotels are right now, some of them are actually non-conforming, because they got built without those classifications. So where are we going? And one of the questions that we would like the board to decide tonight is to include extended stay or remove them from what you have on your hand. We didn't want to remove it without having the discussion where, because, um, the current code consider, um, adds extended stay to it, and we all know the issues with some of the extended stays. So the question is if this, um, if it's your pleasure to approve this, that we would like to remove extended stays. That would be, uh, something that, uh, um, the board will have to decide on. But we would like to take ownership of this if the applicant is not here, because it helps what we're doing.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Oh, did we have the for and against?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion with the exclusion of the sleep-in, or the extended-in, extended-in.
Jesus, a sleep-in.
Well, there's a sleep-in on here, so, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just have one que- two questions, real quick. Last week during the work session, we had a presentation about making a change for the entire county versus making a change specifically for, uh, one, you know, one project. So I've really, Mr. Jiki, if we could start with, um, Attorney Reed, because he, if you don't mind, sorry. Don't go too far now, because he's the first one that brought it up, actually, and did that presentation. So I want to make sure that we're keeping in mind what you all presented to us last week, because it seemed to have been something that was extremely important, especially when we're affecting these changes throughout the county, uh, you know, I guess, in- internally until we change it again.
Yes, so, uh, this, to speak to this request, it would be a, a county-wide impact. So, um, while it may, the person who may have applied may have had their own thing in mind or their own project in mind, this would have a county-wide impact, which I believe that, um, uh, Mr. Petrie kind of, uh, explained how this would impact the county overall. So keep in mind that when you are voting on this, you are making a county-wide impact, although the person who may have made the request was thinking about, you know, their own particular project.
Okay, and then one other question with that. So then we also discussed, um, excuse me, the, um, comprehensive plan of land use. Is this in line with the land use, the comprehensive land use plan? Or is this going to kind of make us pivot in a different direction as opposed to what was previously put in place?
Uh, this will be in line of the, uh, of, of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
In reference to the land use. This is one of the cases where it's not possible to know every details and all the details in your code. This happened to be one of those, somebody comes and says something, and we go, wait a minute. This makes sense. So this is consistent with what we are building. This is consistent with what Attorney Reed shared with the board the last time about what we are doing. And like he said, and, uh, Mr. Petrie said, it's county-wide. It allows us to regulate hotel motels better in the county.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So we're not charging like we did before and had to refund it. I give you definitely kudos for this one, Mr. Jiki.
Any other questions? No, ma'am. Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next.
Our next item is item number twenty-one, BOC twenty-two zero-nine dash zero-two-three-seven, which is a conditional use permit to oper- operate a convenience store with gas sales.
Good evening. Uh, the applicant has requested that this be withdrawn, uh, via email, and pr- uh, provided that email to, um, Ms. Reston.
Commissioner Davis.
First I've heard of it, but yes, I will go ahead and grant that withdrawal.
I'll second the motion. Any questions?
Can I have heard it?
Those in favor, aye? Opposed, it's unanimous. Next.
Next item, BOC twenty-three zero-one dash zero-two-seven-zero, which is a future land use map to amend the future land use map from, or to HDR for an apartment development, excuse me.
This is the first of two agenda items tonight. This is only for the future land use map, uh, which is a request by Battle Law PC to amend the future land use map for twenty-nine eighty-one and twenty-nine eighty-one Lot Two, Mount Zion Road, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero-two-three-six, from mixed-use to high-density residential for an apartment. Townhome style development. Um, we'll get to the, um, there is a condition that ZAG placed on this. Um, said property consisting of ten point one-six acres is further known as parcels, twelve zero-seven-five B, B zero-zero-one, and twelve zero-seven-five B, B zero-zero-two, and located between Mount Zion Road, I-35, Fielder Road, and Laurel Creek Drive. ZAG, um, did recommend approval with this becoming a fee simple townhome development. The, uh, the existing future land use is mixed use, uh, it is required to go into, uh, high-density residential. Uh, the current zoning is general, uh, is general commercial, uh, general business, um, which, uh, will be subject of the next, uh, presentation or agenda item. This is, this is currently the two large parcels and it's, it's adjacent to a dollar store. This is the proposed layout. And then the proposed, um, building elevation, uh, elevations. Staff recommended denial, however, uh, ZAG recommended approval. Um, there are not any conditions on this because this is a future land use map, um, the conditions are on the rezoning.
Ms. Battle, haven't seen you for months, it's good to see you again. I forgot my cards. I'll get them. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Havershamet, North Lake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero-zero-eight-four. As staff has indicated, um, and some clarity was actually needed, um, this project is intended for a fee simple development. And so we apologize for any confusion that came, um, by us asking for the RM zoning district, which we know is, um, called the apartment complex designation, but we are actually building a feasible project. This is for DRB, um, group of Georgia. They are seeking, um, to rezone the property from general business, um, to the RM designation. And in order to achieve that, um, we have to address the land use. And the land use on this property is for mixed use. And what I would say to the county and what we talked about during, um, the planning, uh, the ZAG meeting, is that there has to be a diversity of use along the corridor. Everything cannot be a mixed use project, even though, um, I, I get that the entire corridor, you want a diversity of uses. Um, and so part of that, we feel, is bringing in and continuing to bring in high, um, quality residential development along the corridor so that that will support the type of commercial uses that you are looking to establish, um, along Mount Zion. And so, um, with that, we are requesting, um, the change in the land use from a density perspective, um, this project is extreme, actually extremely low. The mixed use designation actually allows from five up to, I believe, fourteen units per acre. We're only at a little over five units per acre. So we're at the very low end, even though, and I think it's something that I hope that the staff will look at, your land use plan, um, along with your zoning ordinance, there seems to be kind of a disconnect, like we're still kind of old school in terms of the zoning ordinance and some of the designations. Um, because the RM designation is actually the only one in which you can have a, a town home development. Um, and that automatically shifts you into this five to twelve units, five to fourteen units per acre, and having to ask for a high-density, um, designation when five units to s- to eight is really medium density. That's not a high-intensity, um, use in most counties. Um, and so what we're asking, we feel, is consistent, um, with the desire along this corridor to have a higher intensity of use. So even though we're asking to change to high density, we are not exceeding what is already allowed under the mixed use land use designation. So with that, we would respectfully request approval of the land use component. I'll finish off, um, my presentation just so that, um, I spend less time when we come back up. I don't really feel like I need any extra time left.
I'm glad you said that because I failed to ask you how many you wanted reserved.
Not a problem. Um, this project, um, as indicated by staff, um, is currently zoned, um, uh, general business, I believe it is. Um, and, um, on the site plan, I wanted to just emphasize a few things. This is going to be a gated community. Those units will sell in the low, um, three hundreds, um, for the townhome units. Again, this will be a gated community. Um, we are providing an ample amount of open space. Um, when we look at the entrance into the site, we've got, um, landscaping along the front edges of the site as well as around the perimeter. Um, we've got, um, bio, um, retention. We've worked with, um, Catherine Semay in Stormwater to address those types of issues. You can see a lot of green space in between units. We've got a pocket park, um, dog park, um, located between units eleven and twelve. Um, we also have a lot of parallel parking for guest parking, so we've got over fifteen additional spaces, um, that are dispersed throughout the community, um, that allows for, um, guest parking on the site. Additionally, we were gonna ha- we will have, um, a pretty ample, uh, green space area. Uh, we took some units that had been in that area out of that unit. We are, um, maintaining the stream buffer, um, requirements in this area. Uh, we are placing a walking trail to get to a pavilion and picnic area that'll be very nice for the community as well, um, and also the additional landscaping around the perimeter. So we're really excited about this design for DRB. Um, they are excited about bringing this fee simple product in. It is a total of no more than sixty units. I believe that there was some suggestion it might be sixty-two, but I think we had to lose a couple of issue, uh, a couple of units. So we're at sixty units. Um, and again, we have ample parking, um, for not only the two, um, per unit for the garage with the pad in front, but we also have additional fifteen parking spaces throughout. And in terms of the elevations, uh, we have a mixture of textures. That'll be, um, brick on the front with, um, other textures, um, added. What we did ask, um, is to allow us to have an actual, um, book, um, as opposed to trying to approve these individually, um, that we will provide and allow, um, that to go before the board of, uh, sorry, in front of ZAG, um, if this is approved. They did ask for a covered porch in the back and we actually did have that with the different textures as well on the back. We also are providing along the sides, um, a brick water table, which is a nice addition, um, for those units, um, pers- particularly with the pricing that we are, um, proposing. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. We, again, respectfully request, um, approval of this application. And as we move into the rezoning, um, I'll just say ditto and, uh, hopefully, um, that way we will conserve some time. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna have a public hearing on the matter. And keep in mind that this is for the amendment for the future land use map. If you'd like to speak in favor of, please come forward. In favor, anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed?
Hello, Chairman and Board. My name is Maggie Brown. I am a resident of the Laurel's of Lovejoy, which is directly across the street from where this apartment complex should be going up. The, uh, complex is actually going to be located between the Dollar Store and the State American Legion Office, which is a very small area. We are directly across the street. There are a hundred and ten houses in my housing area and there are three and four-bedroom houses. Uh, as the lady just stated, that this would be another complex that's going up across the street and it's gonna have sixty uni- approximately sixty units. I don't know if they're two-bedroom units or three or four, I have no idea. But my concern is, these children have nowhere to play. We just got sidewalks on that street and that's just because they just built two brand-new apartment complexes down the street from us between the gas station that come all the way up that side to the Amer- the State American Legion Office. They have not widened the streets at all. So when I leave for work in the morning, it's normally during school time. It used to take me five minutes to get to I seventy-five. It now takes me fifteen. They have not widened the streets, there are no turning lanes, so you just have to wait your turn, especially with the construction. And when you add sixty more houses to that street, completely with the new apartments that just went up that aren't even, people haven't even moved into those apartment complexes yet, that's gonna be a nightmare to get out of the street. Our apartment complex, when we bought our house, there was a, a nice little map, like the map she just put up, and it showed a walking trail and it showed a, a, uh, an apartment, a place with a pool for the kids to play and a playground. And after all the houses were sold, they sold that to a daycare. So our kids don't even have a playground. When we tried to find the people who built our houses, to sue them, they had been sued by another housing area and have changed their name and have gone out of business, so there's nothing we can do. Our kids play in the street because they have nowhere to play. When they play in people's yards, people get upset. So my concern is for the kids. Where are the kids going to play? There's nowhere for them to go. There's an elementary school there, but it's a small elementary school. Where are all these kids going to go to school? They're gonna bus them out? There's an apartment complex at the end of Mount Zion that when the bus stops, that bus takes literally ten minutes, stops all traffic in both directions, and those kids get on the bus and off the bus. And the parents drive them up to the street corner to catch the bus, which is ridiculous to me because I don't know why the bus can't go down into the housing area and stop. But all traffic stops for ten, fifteen minutes. So you're completely blocked, you can't leave that street. You're just stuck until the bus, bus decides to move. Before that, one year, they decided that those kids should walk to school. There was no sidewalk and the kids were walking out into Mount Zion to get around a big tree. I complained to the principal and she got the bus to come back and pick those kids up because I was afraid some child is gonna get hit. It's just a matter of time. Well, now when school is out, teachers actually bring them out of the school, they walk them up the street and they walk them across the street to the second go home, so they can walk home. It's ridiculous. We, I just feel like we're getting more concerned about shoving, shoving more, more taxpayers into this little street on Mount Zion because it's convenient. We used to have trees over there. All those trees went away one day, I had no idea why. Week later, we're having problems with coyotes in our neighborhood. What do we do? Nobody knew. So the, I guess the coyotes took care of themselves because they moved on. But I'm just saying, it's, it's just so much going on so soon. At the end of Mount Zion, we have some huge cement building. I have no idea what it's supposed to be. I've heard it's a logistic house, no idea. But it looks like big trucks are gonna be coming over there. So that end will be blocked. So my question is, because I work with special needs children, I live in Clayton County, I work in Clayton County because I choose to. I work with special needs children in their homes. If their mother has an emergency, I need to get to them, I may be blocked, I can't get out. That's a concern for me. So I've discussed it with my husband. We will be leaving Clayton County if this gets approved because that's just too much, can't do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to?
Uh, good afternoon, Chairman Turner and the board and all visitors. It would be unconscionable to allow this development. If this entity has any resources, money, find another place. There's plenty of land in Clayton County. Don't make the children suffer anymore. I, I apologize, I don't remember your name. Tell your class to find somewhere else. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak opposition to? Anybody else? All right. Commissioner Anderson.
Battle, did you want to?
Well, I don't, I thought she didn't have anything else. All right, you're right.
I had opposition, we didn't have that at ZAG, so. Do I have any time?
Are there any questions for Ms. Battle?
There you go.
Three minutes on, not from what she requested.
She had three minutes left of her.
Yeah, you're right.
Whatever works.
You got three minutes, go ahead.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you. Um, we are directly across from the school. Um, you know, I, I certainly can appreciate, um, the concerns that have been raised. Um, I can tell you that, you know, this is, number one, not an apartment complex. It is going to be, um, fee simple townhomes. Um, we have agreed to, um, the conditions that, um, the planning, uh, that, that ZAG, um, put forth. We will have a mandatory homeowners association. They will be maintaining and owning all of the green space, including the areas that will allow for, um, the children, any children that are living there. Most of these units, well, not, I'm sorry, not most, these units will be three, um, bedroom units. Um, it will be marketed primarily, um, to young professionals and, um, more so empty nesters. It's not really intended to be kind of that community for a lot of kids, but we do know that there'll probably be some kids there. Um, and so we do pro- provide, um, space, um, for them to be able to play and have safe spaces to play in. Um, there are sidewalks throughout this community. Additionally, we will be adding sidewalks along Mount Zion, our side of the street in front of the, of the community. Um, and so, um, we can show that, uh, on the plan, that we will be putting sidewalks, um, in front. That is part of the responsibility of new development is to install those sidewalks. And so we will be doing our component of that and hopefully others will continue as this strip, um, continues to develop. What we know is that the county, again, has already slated this for mixed use development. That is a high-intensity use. So, um, what we're doing actually is reducing in many ways the magnitude of the type of density that could be seen on this site, um, because we are asking, uh, for no more, we're, we're under six units per acre on this site, um, roughly a little over five. I think we're like five point four units per acre on this site. So we believe that this is a suitable, um, development, um, that the change in the land use, um, is reasonable, um, particularly based on the density. We are, uh, committed to a quality development. Our, um, DRB does a great product, um, and, um, all of the amenity areas will be there and available, um, for this community and maintained by this community. Um, to the extent that there's any desire to have like a, a crosswalk or something, um, in this area, that's certainly something that I would think, um, as new development is coming along here, that the transportation department would look at putting, um, some type of, um, uh, uh, signal or, uh, um, what do they call it? A, a walk signal there so that people will be able to, um, walk safely across the street. So, um, again, we would respectfully request approval of, um, the flume, uh, request and then move into the rezoning component of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
A good evening. Um, I just want to first say that I have listened to, um, your concerns and I also have, um, listened to, uh, both sides. Um, uh, you, you are correct, we do need to look at making sure that we have somewhere for our students to walk as well. Um, but at this time as well, I want to, um, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, that we understand that, again, with the mixed use, just as Ms. Battle said, we could have a very, a very, a large amount of people in that area. And with the sixty units, I think that that would best suit that area. So I want to, I do want to, um, approve the amendment of the future land use map to HDR for fee simple townhomes, not apartments, fee simple townhomes within the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those, just one, just one. Commissioner Davis. Has there been a traffic study done over there? For what that, that area could accommodate?
There's been no traffic study because we didn't have, um, with sixty units, we're not normally asked to do a traffic study for sixty units. It's pretty low, um, impact.
Any other questions?
That's a great question. What about the ingress and egress, the pullover lanes?
Um, it is a single point of ingress. Um, it's only, again, sixty units, um, even fire and safety don't require more, uh, than one at, uh, entrance point when you have, um, under seventy-five units. Um, and, um, this is a gated entrance, um, into the project as well. Um, so we do anticipate there may be, um, decel lanes that will be required.
So you will do the decel lane?
Yeah, that, that will go through when we go through the, um, uh, ZAG process.
And so, can you all explain what the decel lane does? Because it was a question about the bus and stopping.
The, the, I'll describe it. Um, the decel lane is when you're coming out of a subdivision, say, uh, or you're going into a, a subdivision, the decel lane allows the cars to get out of true traffic so that they don't hold up traffic. The decel lane depends on the carriage that is designed for, anywhere from three to five. It depends on how big the development is. So when you go into any development and you see that, um, road kind of veering away with an arrow, that is the decel lane. It does two things, at least from my point of view, uh, that it allows you to slow down and also in order to make that turn, it also allows you to get out of free-flowing traffic so that you don't hold up the traffic. And just for additional information, you have what is called an acceleration lane also. You have decel lane and acceleration. You have decel lane and acceleration lane. When you're coming out of a subdivision, that you're making a right, instead of slowing down, you can be in acceleration lane, then have a free-flowing. So all that is in the land development code. It's not something that we have to make a condition, because it's part of the land development, this regulation.
Thank you.
Ms. Battle. Are the driveways wide enough where you can get two cars in, so we won't have cars parking in the street?
Yes, sir, and we have to have that. When you have a gated entry, you have to be able to have two cars come in and be able to make that turn if for some reason they can't get in, because they don't have a code.
I'm speaking on the driveway, the driveway itself to each home, townhome.
Each unit will have a two-car, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I, I think we already took that. Yeah, yeah, those in favor. Those opposed, issue unanimous, next.
Our next item is item number twenty-three, BLC twenty-three zero-one dash zero-two seven-one, which is the rezon to RM for an apartment development.
This is a request by Battle Law PC to rezon twenty-nine eighty-one and twenty-nine eighty-one Lot Two, Mount Zion Road, Jonesburg, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six, from GB General Business to RM multifamily residential for a fee simple townhome development. Said property consisting of plus or minus ten point one-six acres is further known as parcels twelve-zero-seven-five-B, B-zero-zero-one, and twelve-zero-seven-five-B, B-zero-zero-two, and located between Mount Zion Road, I-75, Field of Road, and Lower Creek Drive. This is the zoning maps on both parcels as general business. The future land use was mixed-use, but was just approved to be high-density residential. This is the existing area. The proposed site plan, a conceptual elevation, however, the more detailed elevations. This is a staff recommended denial, however, ZAG recommended approval with conditions. First of which was that this was going, this project was to be fee simple townhomes with a homeowners association and rental restrictions. Covered rear patios, architectural plan book to be reviewed and approved by ZAG, and one trash provider. That's the end of the presentation.
Ms. Battle, and please set the timer at ten minutes, please.
I have no additional comments, thank you.
All right, public hearing, anyone like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of? Anybody opposed? Anybody in opposition to? Ms. Battle, anything further? Commissioner Anderson.
Did you have anything else you want to say, Ms. Battle?
With regards to the rental restriction, we would just need to know what commissioners would like. I think planning, ZAG, I keep saying planning commissioner, ZAG, I think said five percent, if I remember correctly. Ten percent or five percent.
Okay, so Mr. Reed, can you read the ordinance that's in place regarding rentals that we have in place?
It says that, that a subdivision can't be, can't be developed for a rental subdivision. So if you want to put a condition on how many, what percentage of rental restrictions, you can do so, whatever percentage you'd like to do.
So you're saying, according to the ordinance, that there, there should be no rentals, correct?
No, what I'm saying is that they cannot build a subdivision for the purpose of rentals.
For a hundred percent rentals, unless we declare that to you all and come through the RM as an apartment complex. We are not trying to be an apartment complex. In fact, we're not an apartment complex, we are fee simple ownership. Right, so we'll have an HOA. The question is, the HOA will govern how many people can actually rent at one time. And typically, you know, I've seen, you know, ten percent, five percent, somewhere around there.
Five percent. But no investment. That's why property taxes are going up.
Commissioner Anderson, make your motion.
All right, I make the motion that we accept the request to rezon, request from Battle to rezon twenty-nine eighty-one. So it's not a different, like, the rezon from RM to the, not, not the apartment development, to the townhouses with the four conditions. The fee simple townhomes with HOA rental restrictions, covered rear patios, architectural plan book to be reviewed and approved by ZAG, and one trash provider.
Well, actually, it'd be five conditions, was the, the rental percentage.
It goes on one.
It'll go on, it'll be five percent, five percent rental restrictions.
Yeah, five percent, so we'll just say, just say five percent rental restrictions. So it's fee simple townhomes with HOA and five percent rental restrictions.
Thank you.
Accept these.
We accept those, thank you.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I do. Commissioner, for Commissioner Anderson, could we possibly put a restriction there for they cannot be investor-owned nor Airbnb rentals?
Yeah, well.
Uh, that's not right legal.
Now you're gonna have some problems.
We need to be careful.
I can't do that, and I don't know how the county would even be able to enforce that.
The right to own a home is a constitutional right, the best we can do is what we have in place right now.
I can always try.
Can we move for the?
It's a Supreme Court issue.
Any other questions?
What about the investor?
She's.
I can't do.
Fee simple addresses the investors, sir.
All right, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Those opposed, issue unanimous.
Thank you.
Our next item is item twenty-four, BLC twenty-three zero-one dash zero-two seven-two, which is for a conditional use permit to operate an automotive repair shop.
This is a request by Datron May for a conditional use permit to operate an automotive repair shop at fifty-one sixty-eight Highway eighty-five, Forest Park, Georgia, three-zero-two-nine-seven, which is in the GB General Business Zoning District. Said property consisting of plus or minus zero-point-four-nine-three acres is further known as parcels thirteen-zero-seven-five-B, B-zero-zero-three, and located at the intersection of Highway eighty-five and Martha Street. This is an existing repair shop building. The previous, the previous automotive repair shop allowed the business license to lapse, and therefore, we're having to come back through, because they did not require a cond- a conditional use permit at the time that they first opened. Staff, uh, staff and ZAG recommend approval with conditions. That is applied for parking bearings due to septic tanks in the rear of the property. Install a fence to conceal business operations from street view, and add landscaping along the property frontage. That's, that's the presentation.
All right, can the applicant come forward? Please take the podium, sir. State your name and how many minutes, if any, you would like to reserve for rebuttal, should somebody be in opposition to your request.
Good evening, my name is Dak Tumai, and I'm the owner of the property five-one-six-eight, Georgia Highway eighty-five, in Forest Park, Georgia.
Would you like to reserve any minutes at the end, to come back and speak if somebody should be opposed to it? Two or three minutes usually?
Two, three minutes, yeah.
Two minutes, all right, set timer for eight. Please, sir, proceed. Yes.
I can go ahead and.
Excuse me?
Yes, I'm working on to get a condition use permit to upgrade auto repair shop. And I know I can do some, the, resurface the parking lots and do the parking lines, and install a fence to conceal business operation from the street view, and, and add some landscaping along the property frontage, including the sidewalks and the parking lines. And also, I can put some new roof and new siding to the buildings.
Okay, you finished?
Yes.
Okay, sir. This is public hearing, anybody in favor of applicant's requests? Like to speak, come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say so.
Come forward.
Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the only thing I'd like to ask, Mr. Mai, Mr. Mai, are you a citizen? Do you live in Clayton County?
Mr. Garber, address, address this board.
Does Mr. Mai live in Clayton County? He does not?
I, I don't know. But address, make your comments to this board.
Let me ask it this way. If Mr. Mai lives in Clayton County, wants to run a business in Clayton County, and says that he'll pick up the trash in front of his business every day in Clayton County, let me say, welcome to the neighborhood.
Mr. Garber. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Sir, do you have any last comments that you want to make?
Yes, I live in Clayton County, and I have a business already in Clayton County. And I do have a landscaper, do landscaping and pick up the trash, not every day, but they do every week.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes. I noticed the three conditions do not include improvements to the building. Have you all seen that building? Staff.
We have, the applicant did say that he was planning on upgrading the building facade just now.
Is that included in the conditions?
We can add it right now.
Please. I saw the building, it's a nice building, but it does need some improvements. And I'll, I recommend that we approve BLC two-three zero-one dash zero-two seven-two to operate an automotive repair shop, because it was an automotive repair shop from the beginning.
Where's the applicant at? Are you in agreeance with these conditions, sir? Come up to the podium. If you are clear on all four of those conditions, with the last being the upgrade to the building.
Thank you very much, yes.
And you are in agreeance with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Next item is item twenty-five, BLC twenty-three zero-one dash zero-two eight-five, which is a conditional use permit request to open a mini warehouse and self-storage facility.
This is a request by David Babatopek for a conditional use permit to open a mini warehouse and self-storage facility at thirty-five fifty-five Davidson Parkway South, Stockbridge, Georgia, three-zero-two-eight-one, which is in the GB General Business Zoning District and the Highway one-thirty-eight East West Corridor Overlay District. Said property consisting of plus or minus three-point-three-zero-one acres is further known as parcel twelve-zero-two-seven-two-D, A-zero-one-three, and located between Highway one-thirty-eight and Waterway. It's in the GB Zoning District at the, at the county line. It's currently wooded. The proposal is now for two multi-story climate-controlled buildings. In taking consideration from comments received by the ZAG along with staff, and I believe I thought the commissioner, but I might be mistaken on that. This is the, that's the elevation, this is aerial elevation. Distantly, this is another elevation. And staff recommendation was approval, ZAG's recommendation was approval with one condition, the units shall be one-hundred percent climate-controlled.
All right, is the applicant present? Applicant present?
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Hammer Shamet, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three-zero-zero-eight-four.
Any minutes?
Five.
Five minutes, please proceed.
This site, as already displayed by staff, has, we believe is appropriate for the proposed use. We have had the opportunity, as we are backed up against I-75 on this site. We think that this is an excellent use, particularly in the area where we've got some growing multifamily developments coming into the area, both in Clayton County and as well in the Stockbridge area. This will be a commercial development, and so from that perspective, it certainly helps with the roles, as they say, as we are building something that will be a substantial self-storage facility. We did initially start this with multiple buildings in which we had one-story non-climate control, and then we had additional buildings, but based on conversations with the commissioner, we have redesigned the site to be a fully climate-controlled facility. We've also upgraded the actual buildings. Part of the reason why we had gone that other direction was because of some misunderstanding about what the parking count was required to be. But after having some very productive conversations with Mr. Agike and Mr. Petrus, we were able to come back and actually redesign the site in a way that was much more efficient and does provide the parking in alignment with the zoning ordinance. So with that, we would respectfully request approval based on the new elevations that have been presented and the new site plan.
All right, it's a public hearing, anyone like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of? Anyone opposed? Anybody in opposition? Ms. Battle, you got any, anything? Nope. Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening, I move that we approve to open the warehouse based on, the mini warehouse, well, it's not mini anymore, but the elevated warehouse self-storage facility with the, with the condition of the units shall be one-hundred percent climate-controlled.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I. All right, opposed, issue unanimous.
Next item, twenty-six, BLC twenty-three zero-three dash zero-two nine-one, which is for a future land use map amendment, HDR, for fee simple townhome development.
This is a request by Paramount Engineering LLC to amend the future land use map for twenty-nine fifty-one, Lake Harbor and Rural Moore, Georgia, three-zero-two-six-zero, from general commercial to high-density residential to do, to develop a fee simple townhome development. Said property consisting of plus or minus thirteen-point-zero-nine acres is further known as parcel twelve-one-one-eight-B, B-zero-zero-one, in, in the Highway forty-two Overlay District and located between Katy Lane and Highway forty-two. So this will require another agenda item, which is, which is, so we're on agenda item number twenty-six, the next one is twenty-seven, which is related to this. This is about the future land use map. And it's currently developed. This is the proposal for 60 units. And these are the elevations that were provided. Staff recommended denial based upon the future land use, and Zag recommended approval.
Applicant present?
Good evening, Mister Chairman, board members. My name is George Harper, Paramount Engineering, 11 East Broad Street, Noonan, Georgia. Come before you tonight.
I'm sorry, is there any minutes for a rebuttal?
Yes, sir, excuse me. I'll take eight minutes here. Reserve two for rebuttal.
Reserve two?
Yes, thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay. So this is, as staff said, this is rezoning, and I'll probably just go ahead and present my whole case tonight for the future land use map amendment. This property is currently zone GC. It's in the Cherry Hills, excuse me, the Highway 42 Overlay District. The property does not front Highway 42, though. It fronts only Lake Harbor and Road. We are proposing to rezone this 13-acre tract for 60 fee simple townhomes. Now, you can see on the, on the conceptual site plan that it's got a creek running through the property. So we only have about six acres of this property that's actually developable. The area to the... It'll be planned to the right and to the, to the bottom there are single-family RS-110-zoned neighborhoods. But if you look, the only areas... We only actually have one residential lot that will abut a proposed townhome units, which is the first lot in the neighborhood to the south there along Lake Harbor and Road. The rest of them will all abut buffers, stream buffers, and undeveloped area on the other side of the creek. So our plan was is to develop the, pretty much the good area up along the frontage there on the north side of the creek, and then reserve that area to the back. It's, the whole property now is fully wooded. And leave that area for just the walking trails, the amenities, pavilion, and a little playground there. The property to our plan north is an existing church. It used to be an old shopping center, but now it has been turned into a church. And I would like to thank Doctor Anderson for meeting Pastor Carl Miller and our clients the other day to kind of talk through some issues and hopefully get all that resolved. So thank you very...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Because it was announced that it was going to be apartments. So you know my heart can't be dropped.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. These are fee simple townhomes, no apartments. 100% ownership. These will be no rentals whatsoever. All have two-car garages. Let's see. So based on the staff's report, so we, we had a really good thorough discussion at the zoning advisory group, and we talked through a lot of issues and talked through some of the issues that the neighbors have. You know, being that this property is currently zoned general business. So we talked through some of the issues about what could actually go on that property right now. And I know some of the concerns with the, the neighborhood were traffic. I think those, that's brought up on every rezoning case that we ever hear. And so if you think about, let's say you have six good developable acres on this property at GB, you could put somewhere around 50,000 square feet of developable commercial area. Just let your mind wander how the traffic that that could generate. So we are only, we are only proposing 60, again, single-family townhome units, two-car garages. They will all have a minimum of three bedrooms, 1,800 square foot minimums. And if you look at our density calculations and, and in the staff's report, in their denial, it was based on that we did not meet the future land use map and that they stated that the densities needed to be more in line with medium-density residential, which is RS-110, which is what surrounds us. Well, if you look at our density calculations, we have 4.58 units per acre. The definition, the county's definition of medium density is four to eight units per acre. So we are actually just over the low-density requirements. So we, we in fact do meet that, that recommendation that the county had of medium density. The zoning advisory group came back with a list of conditions. There's 18 of them that have been provided. We are in agreement with all of them. The only one that I would like to clarify, and it's really just a notation, is number 12 on the exterior finishes. It says, "All homes shall have brick, stone, and stucco accent." I don't think, it's, it needs to be or.
Or.
Please, yeah. I don't think anybody wants to look at a house with brick, stone, and stucco on it. So if you don't mind, just that clarification. But all the others, HOA mandatory, one-trash service, the buffers, two-car garages, covered patios on the rear, all of those type issues, you know, items that were brought up. It does have a deceleration, deceleration lane that we've already proposed, because I can see that's going to be required. And we will obviously admit all the stormwater requirements. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody opposed to? Anyone in opposition to? Please come forward, sir.
Now, we're talking just about the zoning now. We're not talking about...
Future land use map.
Future land use map. Okay, well, there's more to it than what Mister Harper was talking to y'all about. Oh, Jerry Garber, unincorporated, Clayton County, Rex, Georgia. I think the comprehensive land use map should be left as it is because even though this property is not on 42, it backs up to, to church, which was a shopping center, that is commercial property. And, you know, when, when, when a church is offered enough money for that property, they'll, they'll be glad to leave and go build them another church, because it's quite valuable property. And it's located less than 3,500 feet from Interstate 675 and about 400 feet from 42 Highway, all commercial area that I'm talking about. And on a section of Lake Harbor and Road where he proposes to put this, there's already a, a piece of property that's zoned so that tractor-trailers can come in there night or day, load, unload, make whatever racket they want to make. That's not where you want, that's not where you want homes. And, and Lake Harbor and Road, even though I, you know, I think traffic is not addressed when this zoning stuff comes up, that particular short piece of Lake Harbor and Road between Mount Zion Road and 42, which is, could be no more than a half a mile, maybe three-quarters of a mile, is heavily used by 18-wheelers. And there's a lot of traffic there anyway, but a large percentage of it are, is tractor-trailer trucks. And... Well, that, that's all I have to say about the zoning. Now, I'll have more to say about him putting homes there. Will that come in just a minute?
Just a minute.
Hopefully, for your sake, not that, not too long.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Come forward, sir.
Mister Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that it's seven minutes left for opposition.
I'm clear.
My name is Wayne Bowes. I live on Lake Harbor and Road. I've been living there for 59 years. I'm directly across from this property that they're talking about. And my problem is with this property. This property is surrounded by single-family homes, plus a church. And across 42 Highway, there's two schools, an elementary, a middle, in which only within 500 yards from this property. The people that lived on Lake Harbor and Road faces this property have lived there for more than 30 years or more. Rezoning this property from general commercial to high-density residential and free simp townhome development, this would not be good for the property owners around, around this property. So I ask that y'all do not allow this rezoning for this change. Said property consists of only 13.9 tenths acres. And, and further known as the parcel of 12118BB001 in the, in the Highway 42 overlap. The district is located between Katy Lane and Highway 42. They will be putting 60 townhomes on approximately six acres of this property. That means traffic and more kids to go to these schools. For sure, we do not need more traffic. We already have trouble getting out of our driveway now. So I ask, if y'all lived here, would you want this to be in your front door? And they, all they show on this property, they talk about a creek that runs through this property, a portion of it. They talk about going to make a playground for kids. Well, I have boarded horses on this property back years ago. This creek they talk about, it's not a ditch, it's a gully. And this, you could put half of this building in this particular area of this property for the biggest portion of it. This would be not good for kids that they're going to make a playground. If they fell in this ditch, it's at least 12 to 15-foot deep. They would have to do something to make it safe for kids. And I don't know what they'd be able to do. And also, within, I'd say, two, two-and-a-half miles of this property on Mount Zion Road, they've got already built and already started renting them out, apartments. I'd say they got between 500, 800 units already built. Where is these kids going to go to school? How is it going to affect the school? And that's going to be more traffic. And I wish y'all could consider, you know, the people that live there, not the ones that's wanting to make money off of this stuff. And that's my request.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in opposition to?
Chairman, I'd like to say so.
Come forward, Mister Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. The corridor now, from Mount Zion Boulevard and Lake Harbor and Road, Mount Zion Boulevard Corridor, now under new construction, is primarily commercial, general business, light industrial, and heavy industrial. The corridor, 42 Highway, from Henry County Line on the south, all the way to the DeKalb County Line north, is primarily commercial, general business, light industrial, and heavy industrial. The land use map calls for this type of construction, not housing, not housing of any kind. There is a creek in question, and I would ask, has there been an EPA study on the creek and the waterways that flow into our drinking water system to put such a construction there? And an impact on the creek? Also, I would ask, what is the pricing?
I'm sorry, your time is up, sir.
Hey, I was finished, anyway. Thank you.
I'd like to call...
You, you got a minute thirty left. All right. Did you have anything else, Mister Garber? There is a minute thirty left.
A minute left? I'll give somebody else a...
All right. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Got about a minute left. All right. Sir, you got two minutes?
Can I have Mister Egeke to come up?
Okay. Commissioner Anderson, come on up.
Good evening, board, again. Our recommendation initially, as you might have seen, is denial. But after we actually uploaded the data to you all to see, we started discussion with the applicant and the neighborhood. The 18 conditions that was brought was why, when you, when we get to the zoning part, we start our recommendation as approval. One of the issues is to address what you might have heard. Those 18 conditions will build, will build townhomes, although they're townhomes, comparable to all the buildings, all the neighboring subdivision homes. The price points will be comparable to what exists right now. The, um... This also will be in line with what we're planning to do. The change will not affect what we're going to do in our new comprehensive plan. The change will be consistent with that. It's true that 42, it's a corridor full of commercials. But on the other hand, we're looking for a mixture to make sure that some of the type of commercials we want to attract will have the rooftops to be able to stay open. So they are reach a balance of what we are thinking. But in, in general, we worked through the weekend to make sure that what gets built, it's comparable to the price point that surrounds these townhomes. And also, there's a stipulation on number two in terms of size. It cannot be less, there is a range of square footage of 1,800 square feet to 2,000, 2,400 square feet. So those are the things that are put in there to be able to get this done.
Thank you. Applicant.
Thank you, Patrick, for, for that. Just, I just want to address a couple of the issues that were brought up in regards to the, the creek buffers. We do have county requirements that we have to leave on the buffers, basically 150-foot wide stream buffer along the creeks that we have to leave. And the county has maps of the drinking watersheds, and we are out of those areas. In regards to the school impact, and this is more for probably their information, but we have to go through this technical review committee to where these plans are sent out to all the different departments, the police stations, the schools, and they provide their feedback on these projects before we ever get to this point. And they said that this would have no impact on their school systems. So just wanted to bring a couple of those items up and, and hopefully clarify that for them, so.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Anderson.
Um, yes. I just want to say, you know, as we move forward, my job, and my job as commissioner is to work with all of, all of us and work with District One. I do not take this lightly. And as we move to open up different subdivisions and townhomes and townhomes throughout the county, um, you know, we make sure that we talk with people in the community. We have worked with the church, um, and I would like to say that the pastor is very happy with um with these townhomes. We did look at the price points, the townhomes are starting at three hundred thousand and above. Um, tears, um, when we get to that point, I would like for you to read the conditions when we get to that point. So again, um, at this time, I am going to approve to amend the future land use map from um high-density, excuse me, high-density residential to fee simple town home, excuse me, town home development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item twenty-seven, which should read BOC twenty-three zero-two-dash-zero-two-eight-six, which is to rezone to RM for a townhome development.
This is a request by Paramount Engineering LLC to rezone twenty-nine fifty-one Lake Harbin Road, Moore, Georgia, three-zero-two-six-zero from GB General Business to RM Motive Family Residential for a townhome development. Said property, said property consisting of plus or minus thirteen point nine acres is further known as parcel twelve-one-one-eight-B-B-zero-zero-one in the Highway forty-two overlay district and located between Katy Lane and Highway forty-two. Staff's original recommendation was denial, Zach's recommendation was approval with conditions, which have been supplanted. So if the BOC wishes to approve this project, staff recommends the below conditions. Um, so the parcel, so parcel setbacks for each lot, minimum levered in area. Um, each unit shall contain three bedroom and shall be eighteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square feet. Each unit shall have a two-car garage, um, minimum open space required is five percent. Uh, zero point six-five acres include amenities, walking trail, um, pavilion, playground, and wooden footbridge. Uh, sidewalks shall be installed on internal and and frontage roads. Landscaping of a ten-foot landscape strip shall be installed at the entrance. Uh, the buffers shall be forty feet adjacent to all residential zoning districts, and that's forty foot wide. Um, outdoor lighting shall comply with section six dot three-six. Central mailbox shall be provided as per USPS, um, food protection plan. Um, and HRA shall be established. The exterior furnace, all homes shall have brick, stone, or stucco accents. Uh, number of units is maximum of sixty townhomes. Guest parking, minimum fifteen guest parking spaces. Trash collection, one trash company shall be established before CEOs are issued. One hundred percent own homeownership and shall be consistent with the rezoning site plan revised on March twenty-ninth, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three. And each unit shall have a covered patio. That concludes staff's presentation.
I'll be glad to answer any more questions, but we are in agreement with all of these, all eighteen of these conditions. If you add the or instead of the and on the the materials.
You didn't want to save any minutes for rebuttal?
No, sir.
Okay. Public hearing, anybody you want to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Any opposition? Mr. Garber.
Now, you've already approved the zone. Yeah, I'm talking to you.
State your name again.
Oh, oh, Jerry Garber, uh, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Now, you've already approved the zoning, you know, there's nothing I can do about that now. But it would be a crying shame for you folks commissioners to let this go in. And these people, whoever's selling these homes, I I don't care for giving them away. Whoever's selling these homes to unsuspecting buyers who have no idea what can be put that's already zoned sixty foot away from this property. It's already zoned for tractor-trailer trucks to be able to come in and out day and night, load and unload whatever they want in a in a commercial area. I I I I don't get it. If you let this go through, they need a much bigger buffer there in the front, you know? At least give the parents a a chance to grab their runaway toddler child before he gets to Lake Harbin Road, you know? Give him, give him a hundred and fifty feet, you know? Maybe he'll catch his child before he or her, or she'll catch her child before they get to the road. There's eighteen-wheelers going up and down the road all day long. And the mailboxes on the front of that road, everybody that lives fronting that has had their mailbox in the past five years knocked down at least twice. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
It's on y'all.
Anybody else in opposition to? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. As you've heard my brother state, that you've already passed the building to approve the building. But now you have to approve the zoning of this. I would say to each and every one of you, please save yourself from this is what y'all get involved to in conflict of interest between industrial, commercial, res- commercial, and then next to residential. You, you are trying to light the candle at both ends. Burn one end of the candle at a time, it'll give you more light. Thank you.
Anybody else? You've already had your your spiel, let's get somebody else. Anybody else? Come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wanda Nicholson, Katy Lane. Um, I'm really concerned about the building and and all on this property. You can't see the the way the land is, that that is a very large ravine. It's it's dangerous. Even with a retention pond, there's gonna be some type of runoff, and I'm I'm really curious what their erosion control plan is. Um, he stated at the last meeting, it was a beautiful piece of property. He didn't understand all these years why nobody had built on it. A lot of it is unbuildable. I know what the property looks like on the inside of those trees from the aerial view, you can't see that. And that's why they're putting so many units in a small area. But I would like to know what their plan is for erosion control. The EPA needs to look into that, that's a natural waterway there. It may be small, the ravine is very deep, but I mean, there's there's gonna be problems with that. And I think so, you know, more needs to be looked at and studied on it before it's passed because there is gonna be a problem with the erosion control. Um, and maybe y'all could even just put it off for a little bit and let that be looked into. I don't know that it's, you know, he didn't mention that they had looked into it. He didn't mention an erosion control plan. So that's really concerning on top of all the other things that they have mentioned. But um, I I just feel like they they didn't really do enough study on this property to to put something like that in there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else in opposition to? All right, applicant, you got about three, three minutes or so.
Yeah, I would just like to address the the lady's comments there at the end. Uh, yes, ma'am, that that is a deeper vein through there. Uh, that's why we leave the buffers on each side of it, uh, so we don't develop uh near the stream. Uh, we're gonna do a wooden bridge across the stream to the amenities area on the other side. But those hundred and fifty feet on either side, uh, excuse me, seventy-five feet on either side of the creek are undisturbed. And so we are staying away from those rough areas as well. Um, as far as the erosion control plan, yes, all that will come when we go through the land development phase. County has and the state have very extensive requirements in regards to erosion control and those type of issues and stormwater requirements that we have to meet before we'll ever be able to get a permit to build this. So, yes, all that will be addressed.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes, I thank you so much. Um, at this point in time, I'm going to um move to rezone again um for to RM for a townhome development with um and with that approval of all eighteen conditions that we're going on with it.
Wish the applicant approved, is there a second?
Um, actually, madam, um, Commissioner, I would recommend for item sixteen, I know he had said that he was gonna have no rental. But it just says homeownership, so I would say homeownership, no rentals.
Okay.
Cause you can own it and still rent it.
So with um condition, so approval with all eighteen conditions, um, with condition number sixteen, one hundred percent homeownership with no rentals at this time.
Is there a second? Is there a second by Commissioner Hambrich? Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next item, twenty-eight, BOC twenty-three zero-three dash dash zero-two-nine-zero wishes to rezone to INDP for an industrial building.
Mr. Garber.
This is actually um in District Two, uh, not District One, that's printed on the the agenda, um, do pause it for that. Um, this is a request by OA Development to rezone three fifty-five Conley Circle, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-five-four from MV MUR, which is Modern View Mixed Use Residential to um INDP Industrial Park for an industrial building. Said property consisting of plus or minus zero point seven-one-five acres is further known as parcel thirteen zero-one-four-C-E-zero-zero-three and located between Gilbert Road and Conley Circle. Um, this is the zoning, um, this is a um larger zoning map showing the Victory Landing Master Plan site. And this is the error of view of this um subject parcel. The proposal is is for building two hundred, um, which is at the bottom of the of this uh plan. This is a um conceptual drawing of two sides of the um of the building, and then these are the other, these are distant elevations for three sides. Um, showing the number of uh bays on the rear elevation. Staff's recommendation was approval, Zach's recommendation was approval as well.
Advocate present. If you would state your name and any minutes you would like to reserve in rebuttal.
I'd like to reserve five minutes for rebuttal. I'm Josh Vitalevsky, I'm with OA Development, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-three-eight. Thanks for having me here tonight. Um, this is part of a master planned industrial park. We've spent a lot of time collaborating with the board, the development authority, and county staff on this development. It's over twenty years in the making. Our company acquired this land and assembled it over the last twenty years. Um, in the last several years, zoning was rolled back to an industrial use on this site. This site consists of ninety acres. On this site, we can build five buildings totaling just under seven hundred thousand feet. On this site plan, building five hundred with this, which is the northernmost building, and building one hundred, which is just below it to the left, are actually vertical at this point. And um as part of this development, we are looking to expand building two hundred, uh, which is why I'm here in front of you today. Um, in order to do that, there were two tax parcels that needed to be rounded off for the site. The southernmost parcel that you can see there was actually brought before the board almost a year ago to be rezoned, to be contiguous with the other ninety acres for industrial use. And this is the last remaining parcel, which is zero point seven acres among the ninety that will allow us to accomplish the business plan and everything that we've put before the board and the county. I'm trying to think what else. This is, this site, uh, I failed to put in a master aerial to give you a sense of location, but this is located just a few miles east of Hartsfield-Jackson. Charles Grant Parkway Parkway will soon connect to Conley Road through an underpass, and that will lead straight to the site. Um, as part of this development, we are working with the county to widen and improve Gilbert Road to be safe for truck traffic. Um, and as the private developer, we are investing in three D-cell lanes for this park as well as sidewalks along the entire area. And with that, um, I don't think I have any, anything further, and open to any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of applicant's request? Anyone in opposition? Anybody opposed? Sir, would you like to use up your last five minutes? You're good, okay. Commissioner Hambrich.
Uh, yes, staff, is this uh part of what we discussed uh on last week?
Uh, um, excuse me, yes, Commissioner, uh, that's what we discussed.
This goes with what's there already?
Yes.
Like on the same side?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yes, I recommend uh that we approve BOC twenty-three oh-three dash oh-two-nine-zero to rezone the industrial for, I mean, for an industrial building.
All right, is there a second?
I second that.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our last item on the agenda is item number twenty-nine, BOC twenty-three zero-three dash zero-two-nine-four, which is a text amendment initiated by the Board of Commissioners to rezone HI to RS-one-ten to be consistent with the existing single-family residential use.
Okay, so this is actually a rezoning. Um, this is also in Commission District number two. This is a request by the Board of Commissioners to rezone fifty-seven fifteen Highway eighty-five Riverdale, Georgia, three-zero-two-seven-four from HI have industrial to RS-one-ten single-family residential to be consistent with existing single-family residential use. Said property consisting of plus or minus five point four acres is in the Cherry Hills Overlay District, further known as parcels thirteen-one-zero-seven-A-A-zero-zero-four and thirteen-one-seven-A-A-zero-zero-four-Y and located between Rock Hill Drive and Garden Rock Boulevard. So to the north of this property, um, is a warehouse zoning, um, that was approved in the past three years. To the south, um, is a townhome community condos, um, that was approved uh last fall. Um, and so, um, the and this is existing residence. Um, the property owner um had wanted to keep his um property zoned residential. And so, um, staff is, uh, had, um, had sought, uh, had gone through the initiation process to do that. Staff has recommended approval, and Zach's recommendation is approval as well.
Thank you. This is a board-initiated request, so at this time, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of board's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? All right, you got any comments, uh, Commissioner Hambrich?
Uh, I would like to approve BOC two-three-zero-three-dash-zero-two-nine-four.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board with a total time of twenty minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residence. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, we have ten individuals who were not able to speak from the last meeting, so they will be first on the list. First is Donna Sharkey. Okay. Joseph Hector. Wayne Madden.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, Commissioner Turner and the other commissioners.
State your name again, please.
Uh, Wayne Madden, Clayton County. Uh, you know, I don't always say, but let me just say respectfully, I had a situation come up in the last couple of weeks that's gonna get somebody killed. If you go to Forest Park, particularly Main Avenue, there's a train that have a whole bunch of cars that stay parked for hours at the time. And I promise you, if somebody gets sick over there on Main Avenue, somebody gonna die. Cause by the time they go all the way around, if it's a serious illness, they gonna die. And I'm gonna tell you, I don't know the rules behind that, but they should not be able to block a railway that long, cause it's, it's too many cars for one thing. Many, many, too many train cars. But respectfully, I ask that you all see if you can do anything about that. Encourage the rail company to uh amend their ways. And the other thing I wanted to uh speak on was last meeting, there was an entity that owed the county some money and I was impressed with the way that you all went after the individuals and I was particularly impressed with uh Dr. Anderson. She uh, she was on the case and that's what I call exercising your judiciary responsibility. And I, as a citizen of Clayton County, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Madden, let me just say that you're right about the train stopping and I have spoken with and will continue to speak with Mayor Butler in reference to trying to get them to not do that, cause they do sit there for an awful long time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Payne. Yvonne Bale. Mandala Jones. Joyce Boyd. Bertha King. Timothy Von Dale Jefferson. Rose Jackson.
Chairman Turner. Commissioner Franklin, my commissioner, and other commissioners, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. This is the second time I've come here. Uh, last year I came to complain about the fact that I had taken, it had taken two years for Rivers Edge to be paved. And at that time, the director, after I spoke, got up and gave me his card. Few weeks shortly after, they came in the community and they started paving Pinehurst, which is the community in Rivers Edge that I live in. It has been almost a year and the streets are cracking and breaking up all over again, less than a year. That says to me that you all have chosen poor contractors who should not get paid for such poor shoddy work. Um, I'm really frustrated about it because I, I, it took two years of my time of going to Click Clayton and talking to the Assistant Director of the Department and finally the director when I was here. And uh, this has happened. So I'm frustrated about it, cause my time is valuable too. And I'd like to know what the, what, what you all are gonna do about that, because if, if they're doing that in Rivers Edge, you know, we're, we're over twelve hundred homes over there. And by the way, let me also mention that N- um, North Bridge, which is the road that you drive past in Rivers Edge, it's all cracked up too. And that's because all of the heavy traffic from the building of the trans- transportation station and Michelle Obama School over there, which I don't have any problems with those, but they tore up our streets and no, you know, it's not been fixed. And so I'm frustrated about that. And secondly, and I'm gonna give you a chance to answer that, you know, somebody to help me out with that, is I was um.
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, but your, your time is up.
Two minutes, huh?
Two minutes. It's, it's over that quick.
Mr.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Ms. Jackson, thank you for coming. And I know your time is valuable and I want you to know that I actually went out and uh one morning and took pictures of those roads. Uh, Kayla sent me that information over and I sent it over to staff and um, and I sent it over to our new deputy COO. So hopefully we will hear something back. We have a COO as well. So I agree with you. So I'm hoping that operations can figure it out, because it's, it's brand-new pavement down, as you just mentioned.
Very correct.
Brand-new, but, and it's cracked all throughout the entire roadway. So hopefully the operations division can address it and address it quickly, so it doesn't cost us more money.
So.
And I will give you a call too, cause I owed you one yesterday. Thank you.
Judith Davis.
Try to talk fast. Thank you for letting me talk. My name is Judy Davis. I've been in the county for twenty-one years. I'm a taxpayer. I'm ashamed of our county animal control and its current policies and the lack of transparency when killing dogs. When a kill list can't be published for common knowledge at least two weeks out, rescues and all animal advocates have no way to gear which dogs need out first. One would assume the longest resident, but that's not what's happening. However, killing physically fit and healthy pups and seniors without any logical reason with little or no notice is a horrible way to leave your legacy in your job. If you can't work with the rescues, can't show some compassion, find another position. The dog shouldn't be, shouldn't have to pay uh due to irresponsible owners, never get, which never get prosecuted anyway. And then have the same thing dealt to them by non-compassionate uh attitudes of animal control management. They never stood a chance at all. Rescues that used to pull from Clayton are shied away. They're doing it at other um shelters that work with them and so they're gonna save dogs, but it won't be Clayton's dogs. They'll all die. There's no true no-kill shelter. It's all in the numbers and when there's no transparency and people can't go and look and see what's going on and choose dogs that they wanna adopt or rescues can't select at least the ones they can save, then what's the, what's going on behind closed doors? We all have questions about that. And we really feel like Clayton needs to make a change. They need to come back to where when Captain Thumann was there. It was a fantastic way to work and he worked with the rescues and he helped to make it better. And I, that's really, other people have the same thing to say, but um, I'm leaving Clayton County. Not because I really want to, but because situations and I'm moving out, but I'm still gonna come back and work for the dogs. Because to me, we have, I'd rather trust a dog than most of the people that say they're gonna do things.
Sorry.
The dogs know, the dogs know.
Kimberly Kirby.
I have something for all of you. Kimberly Kirby, homeowner of Clayton County. The CCAC and the CCPD and the CCAC vet need to stop violating the constitutional rights of all of the citizens of Clayton County in the world. They are doing so by sending the death row list to only five private citizens and relying on these five to save all of the dogs on the list. The rescue coordinator was not even aware of the list today of the seventeen until late this afternoon. They must put this list on their public page. This is a public facility. This morning, CCAC vet Margaret Chastain gave five citizens twenty-four hours to save seventeen dogs that she put on death row. They are impeding the health of all five non-paid citizens. Last week, they sent said citizens a list of fifteen death row dogs, only to kill six more as soon as we got those fifteen out. Said six dogs had no urgent plea. An easy solution to this problem is to copy and paste these lists to the CCAC page. Animal Control needs a large sign at each facility saying that there are more animals at a second facility. Owners and adopters need to be able to physically look at all of the animals and not be limited to pictures of the animals in either facility. Not doing so is holding back animals from being reclaimed and adopted and it's also pushing adopters to other counties to adopt. We are being told to go through the AC board to get fees lowered and to get mandatory spay neuter. Then we are being told to go through all of you. We have been asking for these things for over a decade. Don't you think that this is a long enough time to be playing whack-a-mole with your constituents? Please email me step-by-step directions on how to get these things done. I don't understand now how any of this affects the budget. Please, everyone, attend our meeting, our march on Clayton County every Saturday at eleven AM at thirty-one ninety-nine Anvil Block Road. That's where the police station is. The system is broken and we must all be heard. As far as the hotel situation, I wanted to tell you that there have been many people found dead behind the dumpsters in the existing hotels on Davison Parkway and there have been murder victims found behind the hotels in, in, in the area. And I just wanted to tell you that that's what we need is more hotels. Thank you.
Maria Doral.
Maria Dero, Clayton County Partners for Pets. I had a whole different speech that I wanted to make tonight until this happened today. I do wanna thank Chief Roberts for meeting with us for over two hours on Friday afternoon, because I left that meeting positive. I was so upbeat that we had some really good changes with animal control. I spent another twenty minutes talking to the vet after the meeting. She assured me that she would send me a li- a list, give me ample time to get dogs out. And then to my surprise today, I get the email sent to five people saying I've got twenty-four hours to get out seventeen dogs. I'm not Superman. I did my best. I got four already out. We've got commitment for a couple of others. But that's not reasonable. That's not reasonable for anyone. And so that's why a lot of us are upset, because we're doing our very best. Now, this afternoon, we get another email and I believe that's because of Chief Roberts stepping in that we have till noon on Friday, which we really appreciate. It's gonna be hard, but we'll do it. Captain Turnipseed, in the meeting we had, said that she uses logic and not passion. Well, we're all passionate about these dogs and we feel like you have to use both. You've gotta have some logic and some passion. Other dogs were put down this week, last week, we didn't know about. We were up all night. We got fifteen dogs out that we didn't think we were. I said a prayer on Wednesday night and Thursday night. I said, I've done all I can do. And then luckily, we had some adopters call us and rescues the next morning and we got all of your dogs out. And we've been doing this week after week. We respect the staff. We would like some respect too. Thank you.
Shirley Goff.
Good evening. Shirley Goff, Clayton County.
Evening.
And I was hoping someone would still be here from the uh Tax Assessors Office to address my question, as I was hoping to ask questions after they did the presentation.
We can get you his information, so you'll be able to call him.
Okay, cause I've called. I appreciate him saying that it's open, the office is open, but I have called the office and I spoke with the rep and it just left me with more questions. Uh, my property is new and when I called the uh representative that was on the phone, she told me that I should have filed an appeal last year. Uh, I explained to her that I never received a notice. She then stated that my notice was mailed out to the previous owner. That confused me, because my house is newly built. There is no previous owner. And when I explained that to her, um, you're at the Tax Assessors Office, you're saying you did the assessment on this property and you don't know that it's new? And I also, um, she stated that when I told her that it's a new property, she said, well, your agent should have told you to file an appeal last year. So again, how can I file an appeal of something that I never received? She also stated that they should have told me that and should have known that if I filed an appeal last year, that I would have been um kinda like locked into a lower tax rate for three years. And I asked if that is something that will benefit the citizens, why is it pu- not public knowledge? She said that they should have been aware of that, but my question again is, why is it not public knowledge? If it will benefit the citizens if you can file an appeal your first year in your property to be locked into a lower tax rate for three years? And I also called to ask them how over a year is my property assessed over a hundred thousand dollars more than what I paid for it? So, I'm just trying to get an understanding of how this works and.
Okay, the number that you have on this form, is that your direct number?
Yes, that's the number I called.
Contact you tomorrow, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mickey Garber.
Madam clerk. Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. My subject tonight is roads. Particularly Mount Zion Boulevard expansion across Lake Harbin Road, across Mount Zion Road, continuing to Battle Creek, two nineteen and forty-one. Reason for mentioning this, it is in the early stages of construction. A change order needs to be implemented, implemented to include at each MARTA stop, there needs to be parking area only for the loading and unloading, so as not to impede the extra flow of traffic that the expansion of this corridor is going to bring. If you don't include this expansion and, and this change order, you choke the flow of traffic back down to a single lane in each direction, bringing the road down to no improvement for the millions of tax dollars spent. Now, I would lo- like to ask, did I make myself clear in explaining the situation with MARTA? And the flow of traffic that they need an, not a re- eh, a slowdown lane or a speed-up lane, but also an area just for the buses, of which school buses could also use. To, of course, at school buses, all the traffic has to stop. I understand that.
Your time is up, sir.
Yes, sir. You got the message?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Deshaun Chandler. Chandler.
Mister Chairman, this will be our last speaker.
Okay. Deshaun Chandler. No? Christopher Gallagher.
Good evening, Commissioners, sir. Christopher Gallagher, Clayton County. Uh, Jos- Rose Jackson was telling the truth there, but they did pave the roads there. They're split down the middle there, cause they came back three or four days later to do it there. You see patching and going on to County Line Road where it's brand-new, but you can see the different patches. It, it's crumbling. They did a terrible job there. But uh also I want to thank you guys for putting a stop to this Roman project. I mean, it's so ridiculous and so embarrassing how it's gotten so far there. Checks were written that should be written there. And uh I hope that you hold those that went and pushed this forward accountable for this being such a major mess-up and everything and to go on for so long. And I thank you for, you know, putting your foot down and putting a stop to this. You know, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment. Is there a need for executive sessions?
Yes, on real estate personnel and litigation.
Okay, so I'm motioning to go into executive session for personnel litigation and real estate. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to re-convince, so moved. I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Ms. Ambles.
I make a motion to accept Ms. Ambles' presentation.
Jumping the gun, jumping the gun. Got to spread it across the country, you know me.
All right, Commissioners, once again, on behalf of Transportation and Development, Human Resources, per Civil Service Rule 5.201, is requesting to hire Roberto Rizzo, R-I-Z-Z-O, as a service writer at grade fifteen, step nine. The budgetary impact is two thousand seventy-eight dollars per year.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions? Here or none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good evening.